In the meeting, and we'll start with a roll call, please.
Thank you. Mayor John Harabedian.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem John Kaposha.
Here.
Council members Ray Shaw Ayers-Mendy.
Present.
Denise Delmar.
Here.
And Jean Goss.
Here.
Great, thank you very much. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stand, why? Sorry, really quickly, we'll do a quick invocation here. And Happy New Year to everyone, and this is a New Year's prayer. Dear Lord, thank you for a new year. May everyone in our city be willing to begin anew with a clean slate. We know that you are always ready to forgive us. Help us to be willing to forgive ourselves and to forgive one another. As we begin a new year, remind us of our truest values and our deepest desires. Help us to live in the goodness that comes from doing what you want us to do. Help us to put aside anxiety about the future and the past. So that we might live in peace with you now, one day at a time. Amen. Madam City Attorney, can I get a report from closed session?
Yes, thank you Mayor. The council met in closed session with staff to determine a procedural matter regarding a employee discipline, and a direction was provided to staff to have that disciplinary matter handled by a hearing officer instead of the council.
Thank you. I assume everyone has looked at the agenda, and if there aren't any changes, I will entertain a motion to approve it.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Alright. That was unanimous, and the minutes.
Let me have a couple. On the January 6th, page 5. The, where I'm making a comment near the bottom, the third line down should be only historical homes.
Oh, thank you.
Got you on that Nancy. And on page 6, my comment at the very top, strike the very last phrase beginning with the word someone. And page 7. My comment, seven lines down, it ends with, we need to protect properties with historic, historic should be before the word value.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other changes? With that, I will take a motion to approve, there's two sets of minutes. So we can do, we can approve both at the same time? Okay. A motion to approve both?
Move to approve with the edits as stated.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and that was unanimous as well. Mayor and City Council reports, I will start to my left, Councilmember Ayers-Mendy.
Just with the holidays, there were some wonderful events by folks in town. Historic Preservation Society, the Senior Center had a really nice luncheon, as did the Chamber. But I guess the big congratulations will go to Sierra Madre Float Association for the Mayor's Trophy, very exciting, so, great job Sierra Madre.
Gosh, I had this, it'd be the first long report I'm scheduled to do since I've been a council member, but I'm gonna abbreviate it because I know folks are here for other things tonight. I just wanted to latch on to Councilmember Ayers-Mendy's comments about the Rose Float Association. Congrats to them, it was a fantastic float. Got to go out like I think others up here did, and do a shift out at the float barn. I did grill duty, it was a lot of fun working with all the volunteers out there. Last week, I did take my seat on the Foothill Employment and Training Policy Board representing Sierra Madre. It's my first meeting, so by my next meeting in March, I'll have more to report, and then... And last week, along with Councilmember Ayers-Mendy and Delmar, I attended a meeting of the Raymond Basin Boards Pumping and Storage Committee and Azusa, and I just wanted to remark that I was very, very impressed with how our management team represented our city and water rights issues in that board. That's my report. Thank you.
I have nothing to add, they said it all.
On December 16th, I did attend a public workshop regarding the, what this was, was in response to all the challenges for the stormwater permit, MPDES, MS4 permit. Many cities challenged the permit, and so the Water Board wrote a response to that, or a draft order, and that's what the topic of this workshop was. So, I just wanna say that this is still very much up in the air as to the outcome of this. There were a lot of presentations, including by our own city attorney, our assistant attorney Holly Watley. But the key to this to me was that, again, the focus was on the cost of what compliance with this permit is going to cost. The NDRC National Resources Defense Council, they were one of the early ones to speak, and they were advocating for, again, controls, and one thing they said was that the benefit of cleaning up the stormwater would be an 8.8 million increase in economic benefit, and a savings of 21 million to 51 million in health costs. So if we take the worst case of that, that's maybe $60 million in savings if we were to clean up the stormwater. But some of the presentations were given, estimates to comply were going to cost at least $5 billion without purchase of land, which is required to create settling basins to capture some of this water.
Throughout the state, the whole state?
No, this is LA County, this is just a county. So, again, I'm just very concerned, I don't know how this is all gonna play out. It is incredibly complex, where, I don't know what Holly Watley gave you the opinion, but it's, there are people that are of the opinion that even the local regional water board doesn't fully grasp the complexity of what's, what this permit is doing. So, again, this is just an ongoing thing, I mean, I don't think that Sierra Madre is particularly exposed to this, but the cost to the public in general could be gargantuan. And one of the key arguments was even after these facilities were built to capture stormwater, to prevent the bacteria and other chemicals from getting into the ocean, even after that, if we do not strictly comply with the EPA guidelines, cities could still be liable to third-party lawsuits after all of this. So that is the one issue that I, our legal is trying to solve for us here. So I think there was a suggestion to have another workshop, because it's still just not clear to everybody, you know, understanding the complexity of this. So, just wanna know that I did attend that, and I'm trying to do my best to stay on top of it with my limited capability of understanding how complex this issue is. The other thing is, yesterday, the mayor and I attended the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments, and they were doing a strategic planning session similar to our strategic planning. But just to keep it very brief, again, everybody is unanimous that water is of our biggest concern. The key issues with that is that, you know, we have the state proposition, Proposition 1, I think it was, that just passed. So the San Gabriel Valley COG is very interested in getting their fair share of funds from that. So, I just want everybody to know that that is a priority for the COG, so, okay.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tem, and I will just be brief and say, again, Happy New Year, hope everyone enjoyed their holiday, and just give my, my greatest thanks to the Rose Float Association once again. And it was such a beautiful float, and it was such a source of pride for, for me, and I'm sure everyone who lives here, to see that float go down the parade route, to win an award as seemingly we always do. The Mayor's Award, you know, is not an easy thing for a small city like us to get. It's the award that's given to the best city entry throughout the whole parade, and I just think that's fantastic. And for all of you, you know, here today and at home watching that helped, bravo. And I think it was a great tribute to Bob Young, whose memory I think will live on with the Rose Float Association. But for that float in particular, with his name on it, in the "Forever Young" phrase on the back, was just great. With that, we will move on to public comment for items not on the agenda. And we do have a full house tonight with a pretty full agenda, so if we can keep it to three minutes, that would be great.
Charlie Kissinger, 677 Brookside Lane. I actually bought some notes today, because this isn't like one of my little pet peeves, and it kinda aggravates me. On Friday, this after, Cursings Court, on this Friday about 3 o'clock, there was an incident that went down that didn't make me very happy, and it didn't make me very happy how the police department handled it. I'm here to talk about, not really the incident, but how it happened. There's been quite a few very similar, almost incidents downtown in the past few years. First, I wanna say, I grew up here in Sierra Madre, I went to St. Rita's and other local schools. And like every kid in town, I went downtown and got into minor trouble. And always, always, I was paid some price, usually dissed out by my parents upon having been notified by an authority or some other grownup. But in the past few years, the number of kids and their seeming lack of knowledge of the rules of downtown, the lack of courtesy, and the lack of enforcement has gone out of hand. I have here a copy of, still some left around town. Roller skating, skateboards, similar activity prohibited downtown. There's one over by the headliner, actually the only place in town. There's one at the bank, there's one across the post office, there used to be a lot more. I think the missing signs should be replaced, I think some sort of notification should go out to the schools, the churches, the YMCA, any groups that bring people downtown, and to the public in general. The signs are there to keep people... The signs are there to keep people safe who are walking in and out of stores with packages, or people who are a little klutzy like me. Most of my friends downtown have tried to ask the kids to either, and young adults, to stop jumping the curbs, slow down, or look out for others, and have largely been ignored. I'm not against kids downtown, but there needs to be more supervision and enforcement. Thank you.
I'm Barry Gold, live at 441 Ramona Avenue. Good evening, Mayor Haribedian and council members. Included in the latest City Manager's Weekly Report is a list of current planning projects. I am sure you've all seen it, and I would think that you found it as eye-opening as I did. This is vital information that everyone in Sierra Madre should have. So many people are putting so much of their time and effort in protecting and preserving our precious community, that having this information available will make their efforts so much more effective. I thank our city manager Elaine for including this current project list in her weekly report, and I encourage her to do so again each week, whenever there is an update. I noticed that in the weekly report, there is some difference between it and a page that is in this Thursday night Planning Commission meeting. This page in the Planning Commission package is a list of homes that are between 3,000 and 4,000 square feet during the last two years, that permits have been applied for. Seven of these, seven of the items on this Planning Commission sheet show that there are houses in plan check, but none of those seven items are listed on the current planning project list that was included in Elaine's weekly report. So I just hope that if, if the report can include those things also, it would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
Rob Stockley, East Laurel Avenue, here in my capacity as one of the library trustees to bring you up to date on some exciting events coming at the library. But before I do that, I wanna talk about the library itself. We have 6% increase in circulation from last year, 9% increase in print circulation, 4% increase in patron count, and 10% increase in reference questions. So, things are happening at the library, in the normal course of business. So some of the things that are on the calendar at the library, we're looking for teen docent volunteers to participate in the historic storyboard presentations at the library, so if anyone knows of a teenager who needs service hours and an opportunity to learn more about local history, and get some valuable public speaking practice, send them over to the library, please. The art and essay contest will begin in February, materials being circulated to the schools, but again, any child in the community is welcome to participate, and should pursue that at the library. My personal favorite, we have a One Book One City program coming up in February, and I'm happy to say that the selection this year is "The Long Goodbye" by Raymond Chandler. Excellent book, you'll have a lot of fun reading it, and you'll have a lot of fun participating in certain events. We're gonna have a scavenger hunt that commences on our kickoff date of January 31st, 1 o'clock at the library, and you'll have fun poking around Sierra Madre, trying to find certain mysterious locations, and pursuit of your gumshoe award at the end of the scavenger hunt. There's a write-like Chandler contest, which could be fun for those fledgling writers out there who fancy that they can turn a phrase. You're in stiff competition with Mr. Chandler, but it should be fun. The Thursday book group will meet on February 19th, of course, to discuss "The Long Goodbye." Friends of the Library Wine Tasting is on February 20th, not specifically related to the One Book One City, but grand way of celebrating our library and supporting the library. There'll be a murder mystery party on Saturday, February 28th, and my personal favorite, Friday, limited number of tickets available, February 13th for a Scotch tasting at the library. So, it'll get you in the mood to compete in the writing contest. I believe Mr. Chandler is known for saying that he collected Scotches and blondes, so this is your chance to at least pursue half of his interests.
Thank you, Rob. And I think Charlie knows of some teens that have some free time to be teen docents at the library, so you should probably talk to him about it.
I got together with the staple.
Thank you, that's right. Thank you. Any other comments for items not on the agenda? Thank you. If not, we will dive into the agenda, and we'll start with the consent calendar. Madam City Manager?
There's a presentation.
Oh, there is a presentation, I'm sorry. Bruce, Director Inman, didn't mean to do that.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members, this is my monthly update on water conservation and our water supply. December, we continued the, the very good conservation effort that's been going on over the last many months. We're almost 30% higher, or better in our conservation than we were a year ago for December, so that's, that is just amazing, and the city water customers are really to be congratulated for that. We're saving almost 30 million gallons of water in, in a single month. As I've mentioned in previous presentations, the state is now looking closely at the gallons per capita daily that each water agency uses, and we, again, in December, we saw a decrease from 163 down to 107, so we're making some great progress. Just in summary for calendar year 2014, good, my number is blanked out there, I like But we did save approximately 835 million gallons in 2014, and our annual gallons per capita daily decreased from 209 to 189. So that is, that is substantial progress, and, incidentally, the goal that we had in our urban water management plan, our conservation of 20% by 2020, we have far exceeded that already. So, city's looking good in that regards. So far this month, we're conserving roughly 28%, we've saved almost 7 million gallons over last January's use. Note however, that our gallons per capita daily is actually projected now to have gone up a bit, we would, that's, that's just the use that we're seeing, so hopefully by the end of the month, that, that number will decrease. Just by way of comparison with other local agencies, shows our numbers across the top, in comparison with Pasadena, Arcadia, and some others, you can see that the state, at the bottom there, the state average is 89, so the city is still considerably above, almost twice the, the state average. But note also, that when we started this effort, we were at 316 gallons per capita daily, so we've cut that almost in half, so it's a great effort. Of course, our, one of our big concerns is our water levels, and since December 5th, the levels have come up in the aquifer another four and a half feet. That's good, but at that rate, if nothing else changes, it's gonna take us at least two years to get back to the 500-foot level, under which we can pump our full adjudication. Rainfall for this year, so far, we're under seven inches at 6.9, so we're still lagging behind a, our average rainfall, and we may even end up less than, than last year. Just a reminder, this was in the last month's presentation, we will continue flushing as necessary, as directed by the State Health Department, this is something that we did prior to importing water, and we will continue even after we go back to using our well water. It is, flushing at fire hydrants is required by the state. The good thing now, though, is since we've begun treating the water, we can, the amount of water we have to flush has decreased such that we can use our water truck to capture that water for reuse. Back in December, the council directed staff to start calling back customers who have previously reported discoloration problems with their water. Of 10 calls that I have placed to date, two customers have reported that the discoloration is gone, three have indicated that it's better, but still intermittent, and five of those calls, I left messages and the messages were not returned, so hopefully no news is good news in that regard. And no report on our conservation effort would be complete if I didn't update you on the turf rebate program. So far, we have received 31 applications, I have reviewed 29 and approved 26, in an amount totaling $19,800, so we still have over $28,000 available for rebates, and applications are still being accepted. So, those watching on TV, and those in the audience, see us at City Hall, and we'll set you up with an application. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Thank you, Director Inman.
Yeah, just a question regarding the turf rebate program, I'm, I mean, we, I'm just guessing that we had a flurry of applications on the first day, and are they, are they still trickling in, or is it?
I don't think we've had any for the last several days.
Okay.
We did have a flurry right up front, you're correct.
So should we, probably should publicize a little bit more, maybe put a note in the paper, or something like that? Because I'm, I'm just concerned that, you know, I, I'm sure that a lot of the original applicants, had we allowed for more square footage, would have applied, so we're probably gonna need to readdress that. If there aren't more people that wanna participate, then maybe we should offer to those that have the opportunity to, you know, remove more and get a bigger rebate. But my thinking is, may, maybe we wanna wait a little bit before they tear out their lawns, so that if they qualify for more, that we don't want them to do the work and have to come back and do it again, or, you know, how would we handle that? If they've, say, they, they've applied for 500, and they took out 1,000, could we, like, let them reapply or something, and still get them in retroactively? I just don't wanna let the money go, it's, it's money from the water district, we wanna make sure that it gets used appropriately, you know?
We can certainly make some adjustments in the program, but as it's designed and approved by the City Council right now, we aren't, we aren't allowed to issue this rebate retroactively for folks that have already removed the turf. And I mentioned that I had approved 26 of 29 applications, the three that I did not approve were three that, where the people went ahead and removed the turf before we could go out there and confirm that they had turf to remove. But since we have been out to these places, we've taken photographs, and my staff has taken measurements, so we now know how much turf was at each residence, and we could conceivably then go back for those that want to add.
Okay.
But we'd need to come back to the council and get approval for a change in the program.
Right. Okay, should we, should we monitor, and maybe in two weeks, when you come back and give us another report, then maybe at that time, we can see if we need to, if we think we might wanna make adjustments, then we can agendize it after that?
Certainly.
That sounds good, ma'am.
Okay.
Just a quick question, Director Inman, remind me again, the, because we've obligated the total amount there, is there a time period that we have to draw that down, or to pay that out?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. Thank you, Director Inman.
Thank you.
If I could just mention, we are at capacity, if there are any empty chairs next to you, if you could raise your hand, we do have people in the lobby area that would like to come into the main room, so if there are empty chairs...
There's about five seats in here.
The police department can, there's about five empty seats. I don't want the fire department to come through and start clearing aisles. We do have some empty seats inside.
Five or six. Alright, thank you. Onto the consent calendar, please.
On the consent calendar, this evening, there are only three items. As you're aware, we did not have the second meeting in December, and that's the reason why there are two consent calendar items on your agenda this evening. Consent calendar item 1A is adoption of Resolution 1501, approving our demands. Resolution 1502 is also recommended for approval, and that's also approving our demands. At consent calendar item 1C would be the appointments to the Utility Users Tax Oversight Committee. If the council would like, I could, for the public's benefit, let them know who this year's appointees are. This is a committee that is formed pursuant to the voter-approved Utilities User Tax Ordinance, where, once our audit is completed, there's a group of individuals, there are six, the sixth member is the city treasurer, who review to make sure that the voters' intent with the advisory measure is being implemented and followed by the council. This year's appointees are Mayor Haribedian was Daker Staggs, I'm sorry if I mispronounce names, Mayor Protem Kipocha, Pat Holland, Councilmember Arizmendi, Edward Garcia, Councilmember Delmar, Barry Gold, Councilmember Pete Goss, Councilmember Goss, Paul Savoy, and those are this year's men, they will begin meeting probably in March. That concludes my presentation, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions on the demands or the U T appointments? How about a motion? Excuse me, let me open it up for public comment really quickly, I'm pretty sure we don't have any, but any questions or comments on the demands or the U T appointments? And seeing none?
Move that we approve the consent calendar as presented.
I'll second it.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Alright, that is unanimous. And now on to item number two, which I think is why everyone is here.
And Mayor Haribedian and I am gonna recuse myself.
Please, thank you. Lucky you.
We need just a few seconds, Mayor, members of the council, there is a presentation, staff presentation this evening, so we will be using the screen behind you, Mr. Mayor. And we do have our acting director, Letitia Cardoso, doing the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, before you tonight is the call for review of 610 Baldwin Court, Hillside Development Permit 1201, and Conditional Use Permit 1208. I will try. As you know, you are familiar with the location of the project, at 610 Baldwin Court. Here you will see Carter Avenue, and it's north of Carter Avenue on Baldwin Court, and here you see the project site. This is just a project summary, and lot size, floor area, again, they are proposing a single-family residence, and the garage that totaled 2,317 square feet. The review criteria is hillside management zone, standards from the HNZ ordinance, the settlement agreement, and the track map conditions of approval, including the Stonegate Design The history of, of the call for review, as you know, the Planning Commission approved the project at their October 16th, 2014 meeting. The project was called for review by two members of the council, and it was originally heard on November 25th. At that time, the council determined that the proposed project as designed could not meet findings number two and number five, and the council then authorized a subcommittee to be formed to meet with the applicant, to provide direction regarding possible changes that could address those issues. Councilmembers Delmar and Goss were the subcommittee that met with the applicant's counsel, Mr. McDonald, on December 10th, and, and addressed the proposed designs, the bulk and mass, and the interference with the existing view of the hillside. At that meeting, they requested the applicant to remove the portion of the second story over the garage, and also recess the east wall of the second story by 14 feet. At the meeting, the subcommittee also stressed that the size of the house is not the issue of concern here, and it really is how it fits within the hillside terrain. And they also mentioned that the applicant should consider transferring some of the square footage of the second story to the basement. Here you will see, basically, the changes approved by the Planning Commission to the second floor, you can see here, these are the changes that the commission reviewed at the last meeting when they approved... when they approved the project. The applicant made, made this revision. And then here, you will see a blue line along here, which, and this would be Baldwin Court here, so this is the south elevation. So the subcommittee asked that it be recessed, the second story be recessed along this line, and then also that the square footage above the garage be recessed back and removed approximately to this, to this area. Following that meeting, Mr. McDonald informed staff that the applicant is not willing to make the changes requested by the subcommittee. And here, just a brief, just, you know, the site plan that was approved by the Planning Commission and that you reviewed at your last meeting. So first floor plan, second story plan, basement, this is the basement floor plan, and then elevations. This is the front elevation, the west elevation along Baldwin Court. The east elevation would be the rear elevation, and this is where, along the second story, the subcommittee asked that this be recessed back about fourteen feet. South elevation, this is the elevation of concern by the council. Specifically, the, the request was that they remove the square footage above the garage so that this would be recessed back. As this is, you know, the backdrop, this elevation is the hillside. And here is the north elevation. With regards to the importance of the hillside in the city, the city is located, has a unique foothill setting, and hillside views that have been dominant in the character of the city since it was founded. While residents expect that development will occur on, on Stonegate and houses will be built, they also want to make sure that the process of designing these homes, in that process, the hillside maintains its integrity, as there is a strong connection between the city's history and character to its hillside setting. It is, for that reason, known as Village of the Foothills, because the hillside is a defining feature of the city. And in order to preserve that, the city adopted hillside management zone regulations to preserve that, that hillside setting. While some development is permitted, the, the site should present and retain the natural hillside setting as a predominant feature, and structures should not be the dominant feature of the viewscape, which means it should be designed to fit the existing landform. The regulations that guide development within the hillside management zone are meant to encourage development that is sensitive to the unique characteristics of the hillside and also encourage innovation in the design of buildings and structures so that it preserves the hillside areas. The regulations also ensure that development is located so as to result in the least environmental impact, and also that they're designed, the structures are designed to fit the existing landform. These are all, and just so you know, these are all purposes of the hillside management zone. If you look at the actual ordinance, you will see that as one of the first sections in that ordinance. You basically list all the purposes. Other goals of the hillside management ordinance include preservation of significant natural features of the hillside, minimizing impacts on those features, and also alternative approaches to conventional flatland development. Further evidence of the significance of the hillside and the need to protect it was reflected in the recent designation of over three hundred and forty-six thousand acres in the San Gabriel Mountain that were designated as a national monument. The designation is an expression of the need to preserve the unique setting of the hillside, which has vital importance to the community and its character as the Village of the Foothills. Regarding other large homes in the city, at the November twenty-fifth meeting, the applicant provided photographs of other large homes in the city. However, after staff identified each one of those addresses, it was determined that none of them were actually located within the hillside management zone. So because they are essentially examples of conventional flatland development, they really are not a good comparison to draw from as to what is really appropriate to the hillside. With regard, again, to other homes in, in the hillside management zone, none of the homes really were, that are existing within that zone, were built after adoption of the current ordinance. However, when you look at them, it, it's still noticeable that many are either single-story or appear to be so because of the below-grade siding of those structures. So they fit well within the hillside setting, and you could pretty much say that they are nestled into the hillside so that they are not the predominant view. Some lots where the hillside view is not as dominant can more easily accommodate two-story structures, but some are more appropriate for one-story structures. And here you will see some photos that are, that staff took to basically illustrate that. As you can see, the hillside remains a predominant feature here. The home is basically kind of tucked in against that hillside. Again, this is a, some portions of this home have two stories, as you can see also. You still, you know, have a, a hillside that is predominant, you know, in, in the background. Again, hillside, you can still see how it's, it fits with the surrounding hillside here. It fits well. It's kind of nestled in there. Again, another one where you can still see the, the predominant hillside is still a large part of what you see here, and the house doesn't entirely obliterate that, that view. Story poles, as you know, were installed on the property, and staff photographed the various viewing perspectives of the project site seen from pretty much the south especially. They demonstrate the mass of the proposed design rather than blending in with the hillside is what it shows, the structure, the result of the structure, the effect of the structure, and would obscure and otherwise negatively impact the viewscape, especially when it's approached from the south, from Carter Avenue. You see the story poles again, as seen from the south, and as you can see, it would detract from the purposes of the H M Z ordinance in preserving and protecting the hillside views. As you can see, it, it really does create a visual impact against the, the predominant hillside. Again, the, recessing the second story wall of the garage was, was determined by the council, the subcommittee, that it would help address the issue of the visual impact of the structure against the hillside, and it would help preserve and protect the hillside views as required under the H M Z ordinance. Again, this is what the H M Z provides. Form, mass, and profile of building structures and architectural features shall be designed to blend with the natural terrain to preserve the character and profile of the slopes. Use of below-grade rooms to reduce building mass. Back when the Planning Commission reviewed the project, they suggested to the applicant that they should transfer some of that second story to, to the basement to eliminate the bulk and mass. The applicant created a basement, however, did not transfer a significant portion of that second story to the basement. So while there's now a basement, it really did not seem to help very much with reducing that impact of, of the bulk and mass on, on the second, from the second story. So by not taking the recommendations of the subcommittee, the, the project basically failed to take advantage of a means to preserve the character and view of the hillside. It would be the first house, this is the first house in the development, and it will set the tone for future development of the area. There are a total of twenty-eight lots in the Stonegate project. And as proposed, the findings, number two and number five of the hillside development permit are not met. Here are the findings again, that number two, the proposed development is consistent with the purposes of chapter seventeen fifty-two. As you recall, we outlined some of those purposes. And also number five, which pertains to design and development standards and architectural and site design standards. So, and also findings for the C U P. Findings for the C U P. The alternatives tonight before the council are to uphold the approval by the Planning Commission of the application for hillside development permit and conditional use permit, to overturn the approval of the Planning Commission of the application, identifying the findings that cannot be made pursuant to the resolution that's, pursuant to what you've seen up there and pursuant to the resolution that was included in your packet. And also, the third alternative is to continue the subject project and request further information. At this time, staff recommends, seeks direction from the council regarding the Planning Commission's approval of hillside development permit twelve oh one and condition use permit twelve oh eight. And with this, I conclude my presentation, and I'm glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Director Cardoso. And I know the applicant is here, and we'll give them a chance to present right after questions. Any questions? No? Okay.
Very nice presentation.
Yeah, very nice, Director Cardoso. We will have public comment in, in a few minutes. Is it, is it urgent? Yes?
She referred to a square footage of around twenty-three hundred, and in the comments on this, it says thirty-one twenty-five square feet.
Thank you. Can we clarify that, and then we'll...
Sure. The single-family residence is two thousand seven hundred and five square feet. The garage is four hundred and twenty, and the total is three thousand one hundred and twenty-five square feet. I apologize if I mentioned something different, but...
Thank you very much. And Mr. McDonald, did you care to speak before we...
I'm sorry, what was your question? The other gentleman was...
Oh, I was just giving you an opportunity, if you were going to give a presentation before we opened up for public comment, or...
No.
Okay.
We, I think our, the email I sent staff shows our position. We, you know, pretty much disagree with what was presented in the staff report, but you, you probably already knew that, so we have nothing more to add.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will open it up for public comment, and I do have cards, and I will name you off one by one. And we will start with Heather Allen. And again, we do have a lot of speakers. I usually let folks kind of go on as long as they want, but if you could, try to keep it two, three minutes, that would be great.
Good news, this is short and sweet. Heather Allen on Grove, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Goss and Ms. Dalmar for your extended efforts of going the extra mile and putting together the plan and meeting with the developers and all that. It's been a long journey for everybody, and I hope we come to a resolution, and I, I really appreciate you going that extra mile. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Jim Monacino.
Sort of came prepared.
All right.
Listen carefully, there's handouts afterward.
Great.
Jim Monacino, one hundred Vista Circle Drive, Sierra Madre, live in the canyon. And the Carter project, I, I consider a tactical issue, an important one, and there's been a lot of work and effort that I could see that has gone into that. My consideration is more strategic, and that's the approach that I'm taking, and I've got just a few sections. Here, the first one deals with the city resource management challenges. So this is the city. What are the challenges that they face? The way I see it, and I saw a beautiful presentation by our, by Inman, he always does a great job, but my view, my, wearing my analytical lenses, I see Sierra Madre Water and Sewer biggest problem is keeping the money flowing through the pipeline budget with or without the drop. It's important to save water, I agree, but you still have to have the money to fund the projects, and, and they're tremendous, and I've taken the time to review them. The budgets, I, I've got, I went through a ton of information to try and blow, put this down. Historically, next one, historically, council leadership has been fragmented, resulting in political action coordinated by the city management team, which is often underfunded, understaffed, and overwhelmed because of limited taxpayer revenues and extraordinary expenses. This is not necessarily a negative on anyone. This is a small town, but managing natural resources is a big-ticket item. Next one is San Gabriel. Water resources are geocentrically free-flowing. So they're not just under Sierra Madre, they're everywhere. Therefore, are subject to aggressive water acquisition programs driven by our larger neighbors who have bigger budgets, full-time water management teams, and the ability to create legal entanglements that delay or prevent Sierra Madre access to water, water rights that may belong to the city. It's not anybody's fault, there's a big guy and there's a little guy. Next, I looked at Moody's Junk Bond Challenges. Now, this is coming from Moody's. This is a third-party observation, and there's a lot out there, but the last one that I took was dated February twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen. And so, as we all know, the good, the bad news is we're still junk bond. The good news is they removed us from review, and that was after we passed the tariff. This is what they had to say. This is, these are quotes, I have hyperlinks to all the reports that I'm observing. Moody's. History of rate covenant violations, weakened financial position with diminished reserves, aging infrastructure requiring significant reinvestment. A number that I saw was forty-eight million. Historical lackluster political will to implement rate increases sufficient to maintain healthy operations. Next one, expected rise in operating expenses tied to increased water purchases, and then finally, late implementation of adopted rate increases. So that's Moody's observation. I went through, I wanted people to get a feel for the cost of what's, what's going on here, because we're a small city, but the costs are huge. And I went to Sierra Madre's report, wonderful report. It's done in a comic book-type style, but it's very illustrative, and the numbers are, are important, so it's a, it's a quick read. I'm not trying to be negative about it. And I, I'm just going to focus on our water capacity, our storage capacity. Sierra Madre, at least in the report, indicated seven reservoirs. Two of them were recently redone. Miramonte one and two was replaced in two thousand nine, ten point eight million dollar replacement cost. Those are gross numbers. We had money coming in from other areas as well, so don't be confused. We didn't pay that all out of our pocket, but it's still a number. And then the Grove project is two point eight million gallons, was replaced in two thousand four at a cost of almost five million, four point nine million dollars. Our total storage capacity is about seven point eight million gallons. I thought, whoa, that's pretty good. That should last us a while. At least, this is what I was thinking as I was reading the report. But what I come to find out, and these numbers move around, so this is dated as of August two thousand thirteen, we were using, on an average daily basis, about two point five million gallons a day. So for all that work on the seven reservoirs, which five, every five to seven years need to be maintained, we have about a three-day capacity for water. Run out of water, we got three days to drink through the straw. Finally, questions? New development? Finally, questions, new development.
And Mr. Monacino, I'm just going to ask you to wrap it up, I'm sorry.
I'm going to wrap it up right now.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, I, I get it. Sierra Madre utility fees and taxes are one of the highest in California, along with water rates that are continued to, to rise to two thousand eighteen. Will propose residents' costs negatively impair the city budget over the next three years after implementation. So all I'm suggesting is we stress-test our resources for the proposed scope of development. Finally, Sierra Madre sewer process, Sierra Madre owns its own sewer. Recommend city council revisit a more regional approach to the management of city resources by exploring district, county, joint-management configurations with our neighbors. And finally, we have term limits for our citizens that serve in public office. Should we consider a similar strategy for non-elected civil servants to foment fresh ideas and discourage departmental complacency, complacency? Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
I think you're doing a wonderful job. It's not, it's not easy.
Thank you, appreciate it. And Deb Sheridan is our next speaker.
Debbie Sheridan, Valley Vista Drive. And I would like to point out, there are quite a few people outside in the lobby, and I hope the TV is working now, because I did see several people leave earlier because there was no place to sit. And...
TV is working.
TV is working, okay, thank you very much. And I would like to thank you, thank the entire council for forming the subcommittee. I would like to thank council members Delmar and Goss, Goss, excuse me, for working on that subcommittee with CETT Investments. And I am up here this evening because I wanted to remind you that I did speak at your November twenty-fifth meeting, and I let you know that I had spoken to Chris Sutton, who is a lawyer, and he was the lawyer who was instrumental in helping to write Measure V and helping to get it passed. So he knows what he's talking about. I spent a solid half hour talking to him. I gave him my interpretation of the facts of what is happening here and with this particular project, and he told me that you, you city council members, from what I had told him, do not have to approve this project regardless of what their lawyer says, what their architect says. And he also told me that the courts seldom, I repeat, seldom, if ever, overturn a city council's decision in these matters. So, council, please stay strong and preserve Sierra Madre in our way of life. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Deb. Marguerite Schuster. Marguerite Schuster. Remember I did that? I might have to do that. Yeah, last time I would, I would call the, the next up, and confuse some folks, but we'll try it this time. Glenn Dupenthaler is next. Thanks, Marguerite. Yeah, maybe if you can get up behind the speaker. Our mayor pro tem is running an efficient meeting today, I like this.
Marguerite Schuster, Mount Wilson Trail. First and foremost, as many have said, sincere thanks. Thanks to council members Delmar and Goss for their firmness in dealing with the developer, and thanks to the rest of the council. That, from the documentation, at least appears to be poised to do the right thing. There will be no second chances. As you well know, a whole list of dubious projects has already been submitted. Projects that, from their sizes, threaten to be still worse than this one and would definitively move us away from our historic character as a city. Those attracted to the patterns of surrounding cities have many choices. Those who value what Sierra Madre offers have only one. It is our privilege and our duty to protect that option for ourselves and for those who follow us. You appear to be the first city council in memory with the courage and the will to stand up to inappropriate development. The timing could not possibly be more critical. The forces of economic self-interest arrayed against us are genuinely formidable. The slightest inattentiveness, the slightest capitulation, the slightest yielding to the sheer weariness generated by this long fight will spell, will spell the end. We are fortunate to have you in power at this moment in history. Perhaps you were indeed called to your positions for such a time as this.
Thank you, Marguerite. Glenn, Glenn Dupenthaler, and then Diane Shear.
Can everybody hear me all right?
Yes.
All right, thank you. My name's Glenn Dupenthaler. I live at two seven four West Montecito. And I just received a flyer yesterday, and to be honest with you, I don't have anything written up. This is the first time, the second time I've been to the city council, and it's a great pleasure, thank you very much. I moved to Sierra Madre three years ago from a, a small village in Switzerland, and the reason I chose Sierra Madre was because it reminded me of this small community. And when I look around this room here, I see a lot of people that fit right into this kind of a community. When I received the flyer, I was concerned, basically, because I don't want to see us turn into an Arcadia. I don't want to see us become a McMansion. And that, that's why I moved here. And really, honestly, I'm sure, I hope you feel the same way, we want to keep Sierra Madre to be so special. And people come from Arcadia to enjoy the small village atmosphere of Sierra Madre. So, from my heart, and from, I think, a lot of people in this room, we're asking you, please, keep Sierra Madre small and our community spirit the way it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Diane Shear and Carolyn Brown.
Diane Shear, Sierra Madre Boulevard. I want to thank the entire city council and the city staff members who have fought so hard to protect our hillsides and our little town. Your courage to do the right thing has not gone unnoticed. Stay strong and unafraid.
Thank you, Diane. And Barry Gold will be after Carolyn Brown.
Caroline Brown, Alta Vista Drive. When you've been following a project in hillside preservation for as long as twenty-five years, it's sometimes hard to know what to say, but in your staff report tonight, there was the reference to the fact that the San Gabriel Mountains above us has just been designated a national recreation area. That comes on the heels of a long number of years of Sierra Madre being very supportive of open space preservation and acquisition as long back as nineteen forty-eight, when the city of Sierra Madre bought in holdings in the National Forest for watershed protection. How valuable we did that then, given the fact that we are in such a state of water shortage as it is right now. Think of how bad we would be if we didn't have that. And then sometime after that, the city council put that into Sierra Madre's historic wilderness area. And when I said twenty-five years, it's because I've been involved with the open-space acquisition on the part of Sierra Madre Mountain Conservancy. And all of this, you know, really does tie into the sensibilities of the citizens of Sierra Madre, which is why the hillside ordinance was written not once, but twice, and actually, it's in its third iteration. Maybe it's fourth, because I know the planning commission took a charge at it, and the city council took a charge at it, and then the first ad hoc committee took a charge at it, and then that one was redone more recently. So, in your staff report, when we had the photographs of the houses that were built in the hillsides before the hillside ordinance was even put in place, is absolutely instrumental in why the hillside ordinance was worded in such a way to create homes nestled in the hillsides. We had examples all over the hillsides already, even before the hillside ordinance was put into place. It's mentioned twice, I think, so far in the staff report as well, and people will mention it again tonight, Sierra Madre Village of the Foothills. But I thought of something else that's going on, and I think it has to do with another item somewhere else about demolition permits and so forth for some of our vintage homes. So I can see one day where people who come from, was it Switzerland? And not so far away, Arcadia, which actually, in Greek, means place of beauty. We will say on our banners as you come into Sierra Madre, Sierra Madre Village of the Foothills Vintage Homes and Neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Barry Gold. And Matt Bryant is after Barry.
Barry Gold, four four one Ramona Avenue. Good evening again, mayor and council members. The city has recently received several new requests for permits to build houses at One Carter, as well as a request to subdivide the Stonehouse Development into thirteen new lots. The significance being that your decision tonight concerning the planning commission's approval of the first One Carter House will establish the precedent for all of these other projects. To make sure that the integrity of our hillside areas protected, this council wisely created a subcommittee to review the planning commission's decision. The subcommittee, consisting of members Delmar and Goss, diligently studied this matter. They met with the staff, they met with the applicant's representative, and they met with members of the community. And as you know, after completing their work, they properly concluded that the project design is not sufficiently sensitive to the natural terrain, and consequently, they asked the applicant to make certain design changes which the applicant was unwilling to do. Now, you must decide what to do. First of all, there should be no doubt about the city's right to protect the natural beauty of our hillside areas. The federal government just designated half of the Angeles National Forest, some three hundred and fifty thousand acres, as a protected monument. These three hundred and fifty thousand acres adjoin our city. Certainly, Sierra Madre has the right to protect the nineteen or twenty acres at One Carter. Given this right, knowing that your decision will set the tone for all future development, and in light of the subcommittee's findings, I urge you to overturn the planning commission's approval of permits twelve dash oh one and twelve dash oh eight. By doing so, you will not be telling the developers that we don't want any new houses built in our city. You would just be making it clear that these projects must be respectful of the environment, the terrain, the wildlife, and the neighboring houses. We are asking nothing more of them than we ask of ourselves. There is no more room for compromise here. You must protect our right to preserve the beauty and unique character of our Village to the Foothills. Thank you.
And Matt Bryant, and then Renee Cassuta will be next.
Matthew Bryant, Edgeview Drive, and with the group Preserve Sierra Madre. As someone who has come to many city council and planning commission meetings about this issue, I think I've said about all I can say about it. By now, you all know how I feel, how the group Preserve Sierra Madre feels, and how all the good folks behind me feel about this issue. So I'm standing here for only one reason, and that is to show my support for all of you, in particular, council members Delmar and council member Goss, who are the members of the subcommittee tasked with presenting to the developer the modifications that would be required to make this project compliant with the general plan, the hillside management zone, and the stone gate design guidelines. We support you all the way, regardless of how far this developer and their attorney want to take it. They can either play by our rules, follow our general plan, and listen to the community, or they can choose, choose to take this in another direction. That is up to them. We should not compromise with a bad project that the city of Sierra Madre will be stuck with for generations to come. Thank you.
Renee, and then Terrell Willis.
Hi, Renee Cassuta, two ninety-seven West Carter. And thank you all. And I know it is, you really cannot legislate architectural arrogance, but the project looks like architectural arrogance. And the arrogance of the developer refusing to accommodate any of the very reasonable requests made by council, I think bespeaks arrogance all around. And there's a new word that I've become aware with, aware of recently, a word called urban, R-U-R-B-A-N. And urban refers to a combination of rural and urban, and it does not include suburban, and it does not include mansions, pretentious mansions. And I think urban could be a significant part of Sierra Madre, Sierra Madre's identity. It seems to me we're on track to be a really good urban city of the foothills. And I encourage all of you to stand firm, and we don't have to give in to the architectural and pretentious arrogance of the project as proposed. Thank you.
And after Terrell will be Mike Paris.
Good evening, Terrell Willis, Carter Avenue. I hope you don't mind more thank-yous. Thank you, council members Goss and Delmar, for your intelligent, perceptive, and accurate representation of Sierra Madre. Thank you for understanding what Maude Ann Taylor meant when she called the hillsides "our soul." And thanks to staff for writing such a well-articulated and thoroughly researched staff report. Where are you, Letitia? There you are. Thank you. It was a pleasure to read, and one can't often say that about municipal documents. Some years ago, four people sitting on the council made a very bad decision. And now you four council members are faced with the consequences of that bad decision. It doesn't seem fair. But if you will hold fast to the city documents, implement the general plan, the hillside management zone ordinance, the design guidelines, if you will do that, you can create something positive out of the lamentable error made by the council of two thousand and four. For one hundred years, an orange grove stood on the site of this proposed structure, providing nourishment for people and wildlife, still producing, still alive, when it was cut down and scraped off the land. Make sure the house is worth it. Thank you.
Good morning, council member, or good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Mike Paris, Laurel Avenue, Sierra Madre, longtime resident. I moved here, I was on a movie location in the Camber Department. I've spent most of my career in that industry. And we're on assignment, we're going to this place, Sierra Madre area, about twenty years ago. And where's Sierra Madre? Wow. When I saw this town, I knew I wanted to live here. I lived in a nineteen twenty-nine Spanish Revival in LA, up in Laurel Canyon, that I had renovated. The man who built the Wonderland Park Laurel Canyon area was actually one of the original developers of the canyon, who then moved on to Laurel Canyon and developed the, all the charming rustic homes there. And I thought, one day, I will live in Sierra Madre. I sold my home and moved here because I saw people were interested in restoration of homes and property. I, when the Measure V issue came up, I was so happy to put that sign out in my yard, and I did not envision that my vote would ever be wasted, and I never envisioned that what I saw on the screen today was what major, was the spirit... I saw on the screen today was what Major, was the spirit, within the spirit of Major V at all. It seemed to be the opposite of what I thought I was voting for. And so I'm pretty concerned that what I see on the screen does not meet in any way the spirit of Major V, and I hope and pray that the council does the right thing and makes the right decisions this evening. Thank you.
And I'll open this up. Did anyone submit a card that I did not read? And, no? Okay. Well, come on up. Anyone can come up and speak. You don't need to have a card, so.
So I'm a proud mother of a twenty-month-old Ben. I, Ilona Chakarian, and we live on two eighty-six West Montecito Avenue. And I lived in Arcadia with my parents for over twenty years, and I saw the city transform. And living here has given us such pride, and participating on Fourth of July parades and all kinds of activities, the Saint Rita walk down, it just makes us so proud. And it gives us such a feeling that I've never, ever had since I was a child living in Istanbul, Turkey, just of community, belonging somewhere. And I hope we can maintain that spirit and that homey feeling of Sierra Madre. And I hope my son gets to experience what a community feels like. And I'm so proud to be a part of all these folks that feel the same way and want to maintain this city the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, mayor, council members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. As a former member of the Tree Commission, who listened to endless presentations and promises by the developer trying to sell the city and its citizens on this project, I clearly remember the following details. Inviting sketches of minimal, well-designed, one-story homes nestled snugly and cozy between the trees, in earth colors, blending harmoniously with the landscape, truly at one with nature. Homes surrounded by natural plants and newly planted trees, carefully framing the lot respective of the wildlife inhabitants. I'm now horrified at how that has morphed into large, out-of-place boxes with little style, crammed into every available square inch of property, leaving little space for trees, landscape, or harmony with the natural surroundings. I had hoped, and I still do, that this development would truly be a jewel of Sierra Madre, that by its own unique commitment to blend seamlessly into its natural surroundings, it would bring an exclusivity and value unique to our city. I think of areas around the country that are desirable and special because someone took the time to design homes compatible with their unique environment. Areas like Santa Fe, with adobes blending into the desert landscape. Rehoboth Beach, Delaware, with natural-stained wood homes sitting between the sand dunes and tall grasses, looking out at the ocean. And Wintergreen, Virginia, with rough-hewn wood homes nestled between the tall mountain pines. Why can't we have a similar vision for our city? Why should we settle for less? Before any further action or discussion, please ask for a sketch, or take a minute to envision what this hillside area will look like, with twenty similar homes jammed into this beautiful area. What I see is a cluster of homes that brings to mind a low-end housing tract, where the only distinction between homes is going to be the color of the front door. That is not what we want for our city. Please do not allow this to happen on our founding fathers' property. We do not want to look back five years from now and wonder why we didn't take the necessary action to ensure that the housing we were promised at the beginning is the housing that we live with at the end. Thank you.
Ma'am? I'm sorry. Ma'am, could we, could we have your name and the name of the dog, please?
Lynn.
Lynn. Last name?
Coleman. And I did submit my letter to you, so you do have it.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Oh, please.
I'm Carol Parker. I live on Mariposa. I was born and raised in this town, and my mother and father met in this town when their parents lived here. I have a lot of history and a lot of love of Sierra Madre. When I was very young, I moved to New York City to go to college. I loved New York. The irony is, of course, when I decided to move out of New York City, because it's so expensive, I came back home to live in my little house in Sierra Madre. And when I think of what I see with this design, and what has happened at the top of Carter, and what people think might happen elsewhere in the hillsides and other homes that have been taken down and big, huge boxes put up, I think of Cos Cob, Connecticut. I think of Scarsdale, New York. I think of beautiful, big, rolling houses on huge pieces of property on lakesides with little boats. I think of the architecture that has been given to you on huge six acres of land. That's where they belong. In big, giant areas where there is five, six, seven, eight-acre housing, not squeezed into a mountain that's so beautiful. Our mountains are not rolling hills like the East Coast. They're real mountains. And when you tell somebody that, they don't know what you mean till you bring, till they come visit you, and you drive them into our mountain. The thought of that having been cut down, like Tara said, that was once a beautiful orange grove, and oranges were killed, and the thought of what happened with the subdivision, and now huge houses being squished, I can only say, thank you so much, Mrs. Delmar and Mr. Goss, for coming together and realizing how important the hillsides are. But also, listening to everyone tonight, we have such an amazing town here of intelligent, cultured, happy people who want to remain in a village that keeps us happy and that we're all so proud of to either come to from Hollywood and say, I want to live in Sierra Madre, or like myself, to come back to and live the rest of your life in. Love New York, love Sierra Madre. Thank you.
Please, any other comment?
Hi, my name is Denise Faich. I live at three oh-five East Orange Grove Avenue in Sierra Madre. So I'm a little nervous because I never speak like this. I've lived here since nineteen eighty-four. I came from the Barrio in San Gabriel, and when I married, we moved up here and was fortunate enough to have a good job to live up here. I've lived on Hermosa, I've lived on South Sunnyside, and now we live on Orange Grove, ten feet away from Arcadia. My normal walking route is to walk down on San Carlos and go on Hacienda and come back up on Orange Grove. The, I hate to say this, the obscenity that's been happening on San Carlos has started out with one, then another, then another, to where me, and I'm never that civically-oriented, to leave some letters in people's mailboxes to say, are you okay with this? Because basically, people are dying off or whatever, and they don't even know, or maybe they don't care. And these lots that are one-acre lots, or less, but they're still pretty big, are having these huge houses built on them. For what exact purpose, I don't know. Maybe it looks good, maybe it blends in the area, but really, these are blocks that are being built. And they're like, really obscene. And not to mention the usage of water, et cetera, et cetera. So anyway, I've been here for a long time. I've seen the Marinatha debacle, I've seen the hillside ordinance be started with Maryann and all the various people who were on council then. And you know, like everybody said, one of the big reasons to live here is that the quality of life is really nice, there's a community sense. It's just really nice, something to preserve for our youth, for our descendants, for our kids. We have a water problem going on. You made this moratorium for two years to not build, and yet, there's these permits or something maybe going to happen for some other houses to be remodeled, i.e. torn down to the studs in the basement, so it's still a remodel. To be built for what? To look like it does ten feet away from where I live on Orange Grove? I hope that's not the case. A lot of people have been really eloquent in their speaking, and I just want to add to their words, thank you for trying to preserve what's going to be developed up there. Something is going to be developed in there, up there unfortunately, probably. But just try to think wisely. We really don't need five thousand, six thousand, eight thousand square-foot mansions on flat lots. We don't need three thousand, four thousand square-foot homes on lots that the flat part is even smaller. So at any rate, thank you for your efforts, and I'll be listening on TV, and I'll be writing if in case things get even more feisty. But stay strong, and thank you.
Denise Faich, I don't know how you spell that. Denise, how do you spell your last name?
Faich. V-I-H. R-C-H.
Thanks.
Hello. I'm sixteen. I'm from Alverno High School. My name is Dina Debertanian, and previously, before we came to Sierra Madre, we lived in Arcadia. And what I really have to say is that the change from Arcadia to coming to Sierra Madre has been very different in the way of its community. Going to Alverno, it is a small, very small, two-hundred-and-sixty-six students at the school, so it is a very small communal area, which I have blossomed in, and I hope that I, that my family sees that. And also, and also, that this community is just very supportive, and I hope that this does get resolved in the best way that you see possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I need her last name, too.
Debertanian, how do you spell your last name?
Thank you.
Any other comments? And if not, we will bring it back for discussion. Well, thank you, everyone, for your comments. Very eloquent, very nice. We can start it off with anyone. If the subcommittee members would like to begin, I'll give you guys the floor, either one of you.
So, thank you all for coming out tonight. I know that you're really here to look at the strategic plan with us, which is number three on the agenda. I hope you all stick around for that. I'm impressed with the eloquence of our speakers tonight, and the intelligence of our speakers and the community that's here, which was one of the reasons why I wanted to call for the review of the, this project. And I don't want to dismiss what the planning commission did. I think they did a really good job at what they had to do. And they had to try to make this project work in the best way that they can. And I wanted to call for the, I called for the review because I wanted to make sure that we did all of our due diligence, that we all listened and read the, all the different agreements and the zones and the ordinances, and really look at the general plan and see, is this home, this house that's going to be built, actually what we need or want or should have up in the hillsides? And when it comes right down to it, the answer is no. We don't. It does not blend in, it does not embrace the hills. We met with the developer and asked if they could scale back the second story so we could see the view of the mountain. And through all of my discussions with the community and with the developers and with staff, I've finally come to realize where the disconnect is. When the developers build these homes, they talk about the view as the occupant looking out. And here in Sierra Madre, our mountain view is of the, of the mountain itself. And so I think if we can express that when these applicants come up, and we're going to see them, that really, it's that, the focal point of those homes up there has to be the mountain. And when you have such a massing on that second story, and our, our whole point was to try to make it an incline, so your, your eyes would go right up to the mountain and see the mountain, and push, kind of squeeze everything in. And I'm disappointed that our, you know, developer decided that they didn't want to go with our changes, and we'll have to start the process over again. And I, I see that our eloquent speaker who talked about the hills being the soul of Sierra Madre is here, and I thank her. I think she really opened up a lot of eyes. And, you know, I'm prepared to overturn the planning commission on this project. Thank you.
Mr. Goss?
I mean, I didn't really pay close attention to this house as it was being, going through the process in the planning commission. I can give you all kinds of excuses or explanations, but busy with other things, interesting and interested in many other things on the council. So when this came to us, I took a good, close look at it, and it was pretty obvious to me that there was something wrong. It just didn't seem to fit, as far as I was concerned. And getting into it, digging into the, all the details of it, and going back to the council decision of last year, when they sent the, the issue back to the planning commission, it was about the massing and primarily the perception of massing on the second floor. It's just, just kind of in your face. It kind of obscures a clear view of the mountains, and it just didn't seem to fit in that particular environment. So to me, that was a no-brainer. The real question was, is it, is the, is it, could we, could we design it in such a way which would meet the needs of the applicant, because they have, they have, we have to be considerate of their needs as well, but, but give us what you're articulating, the idea of a view that, that is not just aesthetically appropriate, but is historical, is in fact traditional. It's a view that most of us saw when we came to purchase our first home here. So I'm really disappointed as well that the applicant chose to reject our, our ideas, and I'm hoping they will bring back another plan that would be more amenable to what the city and our standards are.
Thank you, Mr. Goss.
Just one thing that, that struck me in reviewing this project is how deep that myself and everybody else, my peers on the council, have dug into the hillside management zone ordinance and the design guidelines. And I, I'm just really, really impressed with my predecessors that worked through, again, at least two versions of the hillside management ordinance to draft something that articulated what the community felt is needed for our hillsides. And when I look back at the decisions and the deliberations we've made at the council here, and it started with this council looking at those design guidelines to try to ensure that they were properly applied, and we remanded it back to the planning commission to look at it again. And even since that point, looking at what was written in the design guidelines and using the word guidelines, is, the purpose of those guidelines was to interpret, to help everybody interpret the intent of what was trying to be achieved with the hillside management ordinance. And the more I read through that, I believe that those guidelines were very good in helping. And as we went through this, like, some of the little points that we were discussing is like, how much to set back the first story? I remember the architect making points that, oh, no, we met every one of these guidelines. See, we offset that first story by five feet. And it's, it's not a matter of how many feet you offset the first story, the second story by. Those guidelines were there to help everybody achieve the intent of what was articulated in the hillside management ordinance. And we have done, I think, in really good faith here, have tried to give the developer help with interpreting those guidelines to achieve the goals of the hillside management ordinance. So I really don't have anything more to say about that, but other than, I appreciate the community helping with this also, because as a council person, understanding all our ordinances is quite a bit to swallow, and I think the community has done a great job in helping us to understand what the intent of the ordinances are and how to apply them. them. But I want to make one more point, because it was pointed out to me that there was an article in the Pasadena Star News today, and there was a quote by Councilwoman Denise Delmar, said, "Because it's on the hillside, we recommend a smaller second story, so the massing wouldn't be so big as to block the hillside." And then there's a quote by Mr. McDonald, the attorney for the developer, and I appreciate hearing from Mr. McDonald to see if he was quoted accurately, because his quote, as reported in the Pasadena Star News, says, "They just don't want development up there," Mr. McDonald said. "They want everything to just be one story, as they've said many times before." And I believe that that is totally untrue. I'll speak for myself, because I have never said that I think there should be only one story there, and I don't recall any of my council peers saying that. And the evidence here is that our two subcommittee members presented Mr. McDonald with a proposal to just scale back the second story. So, why a comment to say, "We just want one story"? We, again, have in good faith tried to help the developer comply with the ordinance as written, and comply with the will of the community. So, I just want that in the record, that I have never said that one story was appropriate. We've also said that, I have said this myself, that something is gonna get built there. What we want built is something that complies with the hillside management ordinance. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and, you know, to cut to the chase, I agree with my colleagues, there's not much that has changed in my view since we've reviewed this project in November, and since we reviewed it last year, or at the beginning of this year, or last year, I guess it was, 2014. The, you know, the real, the real heart of this is that it just doesn't meet the requirements of the hillside development permit, number two or number five. And I think the staff report is written extremely well. I think the staff report lays out exactly our concerns from last meeting in November. The applicant has not, is not willing to negotiate on that point, is not willing to change the project. So, we stated our case before, that we don't think that this project meets the requirements that we would have to find to issue the development permit. And that hasn't changed, and that's my vote as well. And I will say, though, to Mr. McDonald's point about the one-story houses, I think that's a start. I mean, I think that... But I do agree with the mayor pro temp. We never said that we required a one-story house, we never said that your project as presented, because of the second story, was being denied. We, for multiple meetings, laid out why exactly the house didn't meet the requirements, and that is on the record. So with that, I will call for a formal motion on this project.
Mayor, I make, I move to overturn the approval of the Planning Commission of the application of, for hillside development permit 12-01, and conditional use permit 12-08, identifying the findings that cannot be made pursuant to the attached resolution.
I'll second that.
All's in favor?
Aye.
And that is unanimous. So... Well... Thank you, everyone, and while you're standing, you may leave. I mean, you don't have to, you don't have to stay. So, thank you very much. Yeah. We'll take a, yeah, yeah, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Okay, we will move on to item number three, discussion of the status of R1 residential standards review.
You get to speak.
And I believe our city manager is taking the lead on this one.
Yes, Mayor, members of City Council, your next item on the agenda is entitled, "Status of R1 residential standards review." During public comments at a November council meeting, the council was asked about implementing stopgap, what were termed stopgap measures, so the staff report uses it. Stopgap measures pertain to regulating single-family residential development while the city finalizes adoption of its new general plan. As you're aware, the new general plan is about four months from completion and coming back to the Planning Commission and the council for final approval. And then, the general plan in and of itself does not implement new guidelines. That is done through the preparation and eventual adoption of ordinances that implement the policies of the general plan. So, we could be looking at, you know, possibly, of course, the more urgent ordinances will come first, the more, the council's already identified some of those as you've gone through your general plan review. As you recall, there's a chart, what comes back the first year, second year, third year. So, it could be a year before additional, new regulations are put in place to deal with what residential development looks like in Sierra Madre in the future. A question was asked regarding what could the council do to sort of freeze things or protect things while we're going through this process? Staff presented, as you're aware, the council's currently done a number of things in this area. There's currently a water meter moratorium. The Planning Commission, as you're aware, is currently looking at amendments, zoning amendments to our R1 standards to address things like maximum total floor area, revising our FAR limits. The council at your special meeting on January 6th did direct staff to return with an urgency ordinance to implement a moratorium on the demolition of older structures. The year cutoff date will be determined by you at your next council meeting, but we are returning with the draft ordinance per your direction, I should say, the urgency ordinance per your direction at the next meeting. The council has also asked staff to return with items like the draft growth management ordinance, that's scheduled to return in May of 2015. And we're also in the process of soliciting bids for a historic resource survey. Those bids are due January 16th, and we hope to return to the council by your second meeting in February for the council to give us direction on whether or not to proceed and what to do in response to that solicitation of bids for historic resources surveys. So, there's a number of things that are in the works, a number of things already implemented. In the area regarding what additional things can be done, it really falls into two areas. One of them would be to speed up some of the things that are happening. The council could direct that ordinances come direct to you. Normally, things that pertain to planning go through the Planning Commission first. I mentioned the R1 standards and FAR limits. The other thing the council could do to speed things up is to give specific direction to the commission. For example, very specific direction, you know, from now on, a CUP is required for houses that exceed, give them a number. We want you to make it 3,000 square feet, Planning Commission. Another option would be to direct staff to return with an ordinance that is either temporary or permanent to impose a conditional use requirement for the addition of second stories. So, that way, the houses that are currently single stories, you know, will maintain, remain single stories unless somebody goes through a CUP requirement, which, as you're aware, are discretionary permits. And then, the other option the staff put in the report would be to provide the Planning Commission direction to look at increasing the minimum residential lot size in Sierra Madre. That is done, if the minimum residential lot size is increased, it would, could potentially reduce the number of potential lot splits that may be out there, thereby maintaining things as they currently are in Sierra Madre. The council's alternative this evening is to provide staff with direction regarding whether any of these alternatives are of interest to you or if there's something else you would like us to implement and provide us direction this evening regarding what you would like to see return. Glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, and Councilmember Ayers-Meney, welcome back. I believe this was your item, so I'll let you kick it off.
Thanks. You know, I don't think I have any questions because I did ask a few questions of the city manager last time we had met. And thank you very much for putting it together and for staff putting it together because we've talked about so many different types of measures that it's helpful to see it on one page. And it looks like we have quite a bit going on when it comes to this issue of development and looking at R1 residential standards. At first, I was thinking, is there a way we can expedite some of these? But, you know, realistically, the growth management ordinance may, sounded like a long time and far ahead, but I think that seems very realistic considering everything else that the city has on their plate. And then, I was looking at the recommendations of zoning amendments to R1 and seeing if we can expedite that. But again, April is around the corner. So, I think we have quite a bit to, quite a bit of different measures or ordinances or moratoriums to address this issue, especially considering too that we will be discussing the demolition moratorium next city council meeting. I think out of all of the recommendations, if I were to even consider one, and maybe it could be a discussion item amongst the council, is maybe the triggering the, the 3,000 square foot trigger or whatever the square footage is for conditional use permit with the Planning Commission, but on a temporary basis, because obviously, they're considering this more of a long-term when they're looking at the R1 standards. But, that might be one thing to consider as a council. But, it looks again as if we have quite a few different ordinances and moratoriums and measures to address the stopgap that I was inquiring about.
Thank you. Any other questions? I don't have any. Councilmember Goss? No?
I just, where was that mentioned?
The 3,000?
The temporary one, I remember reading it.
On that top paragraph?
Mid-page three, about mid, halfway through the first paragraph?
We'll open up for public comment. And seeing none, we'll bring it back. Any discussion?
Just a comment, I really think we need to address minimum lot size. So, the question is, how do we go about that or whether you agree? But, I think that should be on the table. I'm still concerned about, we've got many, many sizable lots that are ripe for, I mean, there's no urgency to it because the water moratorium effectively takes that off the table until that's lifted because you can't get a water connection. And, you know, we've already seen there's just no point in approving a lot split. But, at some point, we, I think we ought to take a hard look at that. So, how would we, well, if you guys agree, but if we were to agree, how would we go about doing that? Do we just roll that into our review of R1 or should we give it to the Planning Commission to take a look at first?
Well, I guess I can comment, you know, on that issue where I stand now, you know, I'm not convinced that it's necessary, something we need to do citywide. I, I look at it almost as a region-by-region issue in the city. For example, you know, in the hillside, I don't think we really are that concerned right now in the canyon with, you know, lot splits and things of that nature. I do think there are some pretty historic streets in Sierra Madre where I think preservation of those streets and the nature of the homes there is really important. So, I could see doing an adjustment on the minimum lots, on the minimum lot size on certain streets. So, you know, to me, I'm very happy, I'm very happy to review it and think about it and think of all these different options, whether you do it as a whole city, whether you just do it in pockets, whether you don't do it at all. So, to me, I'm happy to have that conversation. And, you know, one question is, do we have the Planning Commission look at it first? I'm okay, you know, at this point, I would be okay with the council thinking about it, you know, considering it first kind of on a broad level, and then if we thought we needed to kick it down, the Plan Commission to iron it out or consider, you know, specifics of the plan, then we could do that. I don't necessarily need to run this one by the Planning Commission first, but happy to hear what other folks are thinking.
You know what, I, the only thing that I could think of, because for heaven's sakes, we're doing a lot of work here, is to speed it up just a little bit, is that if we actually had a joint meeting with the Planning Commission.
On that issue specifically?
On, on, a lot of the CUP triggers and the minimum lot size. And that way, we just could have done one meeting instead of two.
Can I just ask, I mean, by doing that, would it just facilitate more dialogue and thoughts from the council to express our thoughts to the commission?
To the commission. And I just think it would speed up the process because they won't be spending the time thinking, thinking about it. Then, it has to come up to us and we have to look at it. If we were together and we had the dialogue and they knew sort of where we were standing as regard to, you know, minimum lot size, to really say, you know, we don't need it in the hillside, but where should we, you know, direct the minimum lot size, which should trigger a CUP, these are the things that the council would like to see in that, have the dialogue with them and, you know.
I think that's, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Just a question, what would mechanism would we use to designate one part of the city minimum lot size of X amount and another side of the city, X amount, is that zoning?
We have that already, we have areas designated as R 7,500 and so.
Oh, okay, right, right.
Yeah, so, you know, like what the mayor is suggesting, that maybe certain blocks we would take and say, change that from R 7,500 to R 12,000 or something like that. I mean, that's certainly reasonable.
As long as there's plenty of, you know, public input, people who might be affected by it, I think ought to have plenty of opportunity to discuss it.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
I'm not really crazy about it, more meetings, we just had so many on the general plan.
Well, I'm just thinking that they could tack on to one of our meetings.
Okay, now you're talking.
Not additional, just tack it on.
So, going back to, sorry, I was discussing when we had question period, but are there any thoughts about a temporary conditional use permit trigger for the Planning Commission as it was recommended? Would there be any benefits to that, can we see? And again, I am not pushing hard for it, I'm just wondering if it would be helpful in this time period where we're establishing all of the other projects or programs as listed in that chart.
So, by doing that, then that would kind of come off their plate for a little bit and they could concentrate on other things?
Well, no, I think it would put more on their plate because if somebody would be submitting, you know, a 3,000 square foot project, it would go to them as opposed to a 4,000 when it's triggered now.
No, I meant that it would speed up some of these other things that they're looking at.
I don't know if it would speed up, I'm just, again, it's more of a stopgap measure, I think, is, is looking at. But, you know, again, I think we have quite a bit in place, but I'm wondering if that'll be helpful during this time period.
What, okay, it might be helpful, I'm trying to think how would that, because we're going to be considering a demolition moratorium soon, right? So, how, how was this?
I think it's just another layer and maybe I can.
If we go for a moratorium, you're saying gives you a?
A little bit more teeth and another layer of protection sorts.
I'd be willing to do something on a temporary basis, but I would like to see more study and research done before we commit to a 3,000.
Well, the, you know, I'll just, the Planning Commission is considering it, their January 15th meeting. So, you know, I would like to see what they think about, to the extent they are, they have an appetite for reducing the 4,000 square foot trigger. I would like to get their thoughts on that and then consider it, you know, as where I said now, you know, I think the 4,000 square foot trigger is still reasonable in my mind. And, you know, I don't see a, I don't see a ton of compelling reasons right now to change that. But, you know, I can have that conversation, but.
So, again, I was thinking, and that was a specific question that I had for the city manager, is it, is this something we can look at as a temporary basis? And again, I have no standard as to what the right square footage is, and I appreciate seeing the 4,000. But, again, as a temporary stopgap, if that would be helpful for our town.
If I can comment first, if you don't mind, is, I mean, just, it's on the, it's on the Planning Commission's agenda for next week. And I, you know.
It's not next week, it's Thursday.
Oh, this week, okay, wow, time is flying, it's already the middle of January.
I know, you said January 15th, it doesn't feel like this week.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it can't even be put on their agenda anyway?
It is on their agenda.
It is.
For the, but it's specific to 4,000 or is it?
To reduce it less than 4,000. They have, they have discussed, they've discussed it at two meetings. I think our interim director could give more, it's something they've been discussing. My gut feeling is, I don't know, don't know what to find, but I think this meeting, they're probably ready to make a recommendation. They're very thorough, they've asked for additional information from staff analysis. And they could, they could, there's a possibility they could come up with a recommendation on what that number should be Thursday night.
That is correct, they will be considering that, they will be considering the calculation of maximum allowable floor area. They have mentioned the idea of considering lot sizes, although it's not something specifically that they ask staff to come back with any additional information, but that's something that's been, you know, mentioned. And also, the, so that it's the square footage that triggers a CUP, it's the maximum lot area. I'm trying to remember one more thing that they were toying with that they will be discussing.
The floor area?
Redefine how lot coverage is calculated and establish new limits, that's the third bullet.
Yeah, that is the floor area calculation. It's in the staff report, for some reason, it's escaping me, but they, this is, they discussed it once in, they wanted more information before they can move forward. Oh, the third thing that they asked for was how other cities calculate their maximum allowable as well as what other cities, which other cities have CUP limits as well. So, that's all in that staff report, and hopefully, it's enough information for them to make a decision so that this can be moved forward with us coming back with an actual amendment that will then be recommended to you for approval. And we're looking at possibly April 14th for that to come to city council? April 14th, I think, is in the strategic plan as a goal that should be met by then. It could even be sooner than that, I mean, if they do move forward requesting an ordinance to come back to them, then it could be sooner than that, or it would at least meet that deadline, hopefully. Thank you.
So, I, my comment is, I'm just not sure that it'd be productive for us to insert ourselves into that since we've already, you know.
And just as a reminder, in the general plan land use that you just reviewed, you did include a policy to reconsider a minimum lot sizes. So, it may not be done now, but eventually will need to be addressed. And again, with the moratorium in place at this point, subdivisions are pretty much not moving forward, so you do have a little bit of time as far as that goes. But, it is something that you will be reviewing later on as part of that implementation.
So, on April 14th, again, we are, the staff is looking for discussion and direction on revising R1 standards. So, the Planning Commission is already doing a lot of work in advance of that. And I think right now, perhaps, we're expressing, if you guys agree, that, you know, certainly, lot size should be part of that. So, if we gave you that direction right now, we're kind of ahead of the game and we'll figure it, work it in however it gets worked in, you know?
Yeah, and I also don't think it makes sense to consider the 3,000 now because I don't want that to hold up this process of the real ordinance coming through. So, I'm okay with not pushing for that at all.
And if I could just mention, the Planning, Planning Commission liaison and backup will not be here Thursday. So, if one of you could go. To the Planning Commission.
I might be able to, let me, let me look at my schedule. Are you, are you available to? We can talk offline to see, make sure we get someone there. But, you know, I'm happy to give direction on the minimum lot size right now just to have that be an aspect that we look at. And again, if the Planning Commission, I assume that they're being inundated with a lot of stuff, and this is important, but I'm also okay, if they don't have time to get to it before April 14th, I'm okay with us taking the first shot at it and thinking about it and discussing it. Because I don't think it's going to be a one, I doubt it's going to be a one-meeting agenda item. I think this is going to be one where we delve into a lot of data and we're going to want statistics and think about different streets and different areas. And I do think Councilmember Goss is right, I think that, you know, the minimum lot size discussion will, will require a lot of outreach to the community because, you know, you'll get folks on Grandview that will, you know, that are going to want to know whether you're reducing their lot size. And so, I'm okay with the Planning Commission looking at it, but if they don't have time before April 14th, in my view, we can just, we can deal with it then without their input. But, again, if they have time, it's fine with me if you want them to consider it.
It's fine with me.
Well, relay that message to them.
I mean, just looking forward, I mean, from here until April, what is the Planning Commission's, is it a full plate? Or are there, you know, are there, you know, dead pockets in February, March to where they might, they might have some time or?
Look, she's, she's trying to recreate.
Yeah, I doubt that.
I have in my mind all of that. There are some CUPs in the pipeline. There are also several hillside development permits that have just been submitted. So, those will be coming to them in the next several months. I mean, and, you know, we're always receiving other applications that could add to that. It's, you know, I, they will have things to do. It's always the case. But, I mean, if that's your direction, you know, we would, you know, make sure that that gets accomplished. But, yeah, it's, you know, and that, and that may take, you know, I mean, frankly, it may just be a matter of, you know, the different lot sizes throughout the city have already been pretty much designated. And I would assume it was done with the basis for those designations. Some areas are 15,000, some areas are 11,000. It could be as simple as just increasing those. I mean, increasing them by a couple thousand, 5,000 each, you know, really is, I don't know that there's a magic number that you're going to be able to achieve. The same thing with the CUP threshold. I mean, it really is, you want to try 3,000, let's try there for a while and see how many more houses we captured and how many projects come out better through that revision. I think it would be hard to establish a magic number. I think it's just a matter of increasing it and moving forward, seeing how it works. And if you feel like there's still a lot falling through the cracks, you can revisit it again in the future. But, it's really, it could be as simple as that, really, to capture most of those potential subdivisions.
Well, does, thank you, that was helpful. Does council want to give direction to have the Planning Commission? I was the only one that really expressed my opinion as to whether I think the Plan Commission could, you know, should consider this before we do. If we want to give direction that they consider minimum lot size before we do, by all means, we can give direction.
Well, I think, I think what we need to express is that the council, you know, agrees that minimum lot size should have a relook. And, you know, if we do that, you can put it on, you squeeze it in. I mean, you guys know what their agendas look like, and as appropriate, deal with it. And if they don't, then we will, it's just, to me, that's simple.
It's fine, yeah, and if that's all we need in terms of direction, that's fine with me.
And they're, they're so knowledgeable about what the current minimum lot sizes are that they would probably able to go through it a little faster than we would.
Does that sound okay?
Yep.
Our acting director had a good point, though, is that I don't know that it requires a lot of study. You know, it's almost like, pick a number.
You're right.
And, you know, I, again, we, who knows? I mean, we won't have the results of the survey back by then because we're, you know, the historical survey. But, I mean, you know, there is in the record that we are concerned about certain neighborhoods for sure. And I'll say it again, just Miramonte, Allegria, you know, Grandview, that area where there's some very nice properties with nice houses on it, I'm very concerned about some of that. I haven't re- I'm very concerned about some of that. I haven't really looked at threats to others, but we do have still a, a number of substantial lots with potentially historic properties on them and I'm concerned about those, so.
Yeah, and, you know, I'll just say that I don't think that, I don't think that there's going to be a magic number, I don't, but I also don't, you know, on the flip side, I guess my biggest concern about this exercise is going to be kind of picking an arbitrary number without any sort of basis or evidence to support why we're moving from a fifteen thousand to an eighteen thousand or a seventy-five hundred to a ten. So I guess my point is, I would like, I think, a little bit more, you know, data or discussion about what other cities are doing or why it might make sense in certain areas of the city to potentially look at increasing, you know, the minimum lot size there versus other ones. Because otherwise, it feels like, you know, I'm just picking out of a hat here, you know, it's, you know, well, seventy-five seems okay, but maybe ten is better. And I just want to make sure that, you know, to the extent we have that conversation, we know that, you know, that there is a defensible reason to do that, you know, and it is.
The residents expect that.
Right, well, yeah, exactly, I mean.
Expect us to justify doing this.
And I have to say, one of the benefits of taking it through our planning commission is, is just as they've taken a very thorough review of the CUP threshold, they will do the same thorough review. They're, they're not folks that grab numbers out of the air. They're very complete and thorough in studying and asking for information and the analysis.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's who our planning commission is.
Well, and I think the other defensible reason is just because of reviewing the general plan. It just, we, we really are trying to limit what I consider inappropriate growth. We know the stresses and restrictions we have on the water supply. And we've said and we've agreed that, you know, we want to get back to our traditional source of water and the, the more we can limit impacts on that, I, I think the better off we are. You know, I mean, that, in my mind, is just a defensible reason in itself.
Right. No, and I guess, I don't disagree necessarily and I just think that, you know, you need to, to get to that point, though, you need to come to the conclusion that the current minimum lot sizes are not sufficient, right? And so at minimum, you know, the discussion or the, the analysis needs to start at that, at that step, you know, point one, you know, are the minimum lot sizes as they stand now insufficient in, in reaching that goal? And, you know, I don't know. I mean, maybe they are, maybe they aren't. I just don't know. And so that's why, I mean, that's why I'm happy to have this conversation. I really am. And, and, you know, the more I think about it, the more I, I do think that, yeah, the planning commission running through this and, and talking about it could not hurt because, you know, just in a three to five minute conversation we, we're having here, I think it could get a little bit complicated and the more public hearing we have on it, the better, so.
Well, I think, though, we are, it sounds like we may be in agreement, though, we don't want to delay whatever R one standards that the planning commission is already going to talk about on Thursday. And maybe this amendment for the lot sizes is for, at a later time.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Anything else? Okay, well, this is good. This was a received and filed, I believe, unless we wanted to provide, and we did provide direction, so we can move on to the strategic plan. And if we do have a PowerPoint, it's, I think it's okay not to give it considering that there's.
Okay.
There are folks at home, but, you know, I'll take that back. If there are folks at home, you know, if there are folks at home that want to see the PowerPoint, we can run through it, but I, I'm okay going through it orally. If that's okay with the city manager, yeah.
The city council prefers. I would like to stress that this is actually your new, you are approving your new strategic plan. The council met in November, but we've had some full agendas, so the actual approval of our strategic plan didn't happen at the previous meetings. So first off, we're requesting that this evening, for you to approve this and make it our official strategic plan for the period of November through April or May. Under, and, and so the, the objectives are different than what has been presented at previous council meetings. These are new objectives. Under maintain and approve the, the public infrastructure, the council has asked us to present a master plan for sidewalk repair, to present a request for proposal for the replacement of our obsolete voicemail and telephone systems, to, to present a report to city council on completion of the fiscal year thirteen fourteen street project, to recommend to the council the hiring of a consultant to conduct a physical assessment of the library building and to present to the city council a notice of completion for the Grandview sewer project. Those are under maintain and improve the city infrastructure. Under maintain financial stability and sustainability, we are to present a plan for allocating development impact fees to eligible projects. Staff is to present the fiscal year thirteen fourteen comprehensive annual financial report. That's our audit to the city council. No later than February twenty-fourth. I want to give a date for that one because it's important. We meet that deadline. We also have presenting a draft of the fiscal year fifteen sixteen and sixteen seventeen. That's our new biannual budget to the city council in April. And then there are two future items because they're important, but we, we don't foresee doing them within this next six month period. One of them is publishing a summary budget document once we get our new biannual budget approved and the other one is to go out to bid for new banking services. Under attract and develop, attract, develop and retain staff, there are only two items. One is, as you're aware, recruiting for a new planning and community preservation director and a new finance director. So we hope to find those two new directors here in the next six month period. The next one is to have the mayor, Mayor Potem, will be meeting with the department staff at each of our city departments to get feedback and report results back to the city council. Under preserve our small town character with a vibrant downtown, there are four items. One of them is to present to the council, which actually we've completed this, for review the final chapters of the general plan. That's actually completed. We have developed and presented to city council a plan for regular community informational gatherings to improve community and city government communication. That is a subcommittee of council member Delmar with staff. The third item is to recommend to city council amendments to the R one ordinance to address mancernization. We talked about that the previous item. That is where the strategic plan date of April fourteenth came from. That's in the, that was mentioned in the previous staff report. Then lastly, we have the final general plan and E I R for the general plan to the city council in late April. So that can be finally approved and that's consistent with what was mentioned earlier this evening. There are two items that are future because we think that, actually, we've moved it. One of, one of the future items was the historic resource survey, but based on discussions, I'm, I'm sure that will be done within the next six month period. At least bringing back the results of the survey to get direction from the city council on what to do next. And then the other item that is for future is to get back to marketing, our marketing and branding plan at some point in, in six months out. Under make Sierra Madre an environmentally sustainable community, especially regarding water, we have actually another completed item here, developing and presenting the turf removal program which we are, it is underway and we have some money left, so if anyone's interested in having grass removed, please come to city hall. We have complete the water conservation, a complete and update of our water conservation ordinance and recommend changes to the city council for you to consider. That's, is scheduled to come back to you in the next meeting or two. We have identify long-term beneficial use of shared facilities to deliver San Gabriel Valley Municipal District water to Sierra Madre and to report that back to the city council. We have presenting to the council a plan for improvement of the east, of the water that comes from the east tunnel. We have a report to the city council on the possible conversion of our water disinfectant from chlorine to chloramine to allow for the blending of imported water with groundwater. And then we have, last but not least, recommending ordinances regarding stormwater capture such as grading and low-impact development, landscaping modifications to the city council for your consideration. And then one future item is an adopted tree program did fall to outside of the six month timeframe of this current strategic plan. That's all the items and if the council is in agreement with those items, it would be appropriate to recommend adoption of this strategic plan. You can also modify it this evening and staff will wait your direction.
Well done on already completing a number of these, you know, I mean, that's great. And I do think that that April fourteenth, two thousand fifteen deadline, I mean, there's a lot that needs to get done. So the budget, the biannual budget, to me, is the one that jumps out the most and knowing that staff is going to be doing the budget and the, the numerous other water conservation and, and infrastructure and building issues, I just want all of us to be cognizant that if some of these do slip, which we don't, we hope they don't, I think it's understandable. I do. So that's all I have to say about that. I also do think that in terms of the meetings around, for each department, for the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and the city manager, you know, we should probably just start scheduling them as soon as possible if, if the deadline is for March, so.
We will probably be recommend, because things are so heavy in, in February, March, April. We did have a few special meetings before the holiday break. I predict we probably will need a few special meetings to review budget. Budget tends to be one of those items where it's good to just concentrate on just that for one evening, so we'll, we will probably also necessitate a few meetings, a few extra meetings here and there to get this all done.
Any questions? We'll open it up for public comment. And there is no public, so we'll bring it back, yeah.
Must have been me.
That's right, as soon as you come back. This looks great to me, so I have no changes.
Well, I moved, oh, do you have comment?
Any, yeah, any discussion or?
Nope.
Okay.
I move to approve and adopt the strategic plan as presented.
I was in favor.
Aye.
As unanimous. And any items for future agendas?
Before we adjourn, though, I do have a problem with scheduling that I can no longer attend the Ener meetings.
Okay, now, when is, when are those meetings?
Those are on Thursdays, or Thursdays?
Third Wednesday.
The third Wednesday of the month, so I just wondered if somebody wanted to swap.
Uh, I could possibly, I'm, I currently do the library, which I believe is a fourth, is that the fourth Wednesday?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fourth Wednesday at what time? I can't do Wednesday evenings, it's my.
The alternate would be me, I believe. I think I'm the alternate, maybe not.
I can't, my problem is I can't do Wednesdays or Monday evenings.
Can, well, let's, and if we. And maybe we can do like a triple, I mean, when, when, you can do anything but Monday and Wednesday nights?
Yeah, yeah, uh-huh.
Is anyone up here flexible? I, I can do Wednesday nights, but the only thing I have to, to switch with you is another Wednesday night, so that doesn't help. When does the senior commission meets?
I could do senior.
I do that at three o'clock on Wednesdays. Thursday.
Thursdays, I could do those, yeah, if you.
I, I'm, my Wednesday nights are filled up.
Do you want to switch community services, which are third Mondays?
No, Mondays are no good. I can't do Monday or Wednesday.
What else meets on Thursday?
Planning commission.
Do you want to go back to the planning commission?
I could, I mean, I could. It's more, you know, it's double the work. You have to attend twice as many meetings, but, but, you know, I'm, I'm flexible. I have the time. I can do it. It's just that I can't do these. Okay, swap planning commission for, okay. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, that's fine. We don't need to, we don't need formal action on that or anything, right? I mean, it's, the only, the only reason I ask is I think we do committee assignments by, by ordinance, don't we?
Well, the council.
Or by resolution.
The council approves it. It's not by ordinance, but it is formal council action. I can bring back a quick consent calendar item just to make it formal.
Just to formalize it. It's fine with me.
All right, thank you.
And, and I'll just throw this out there, if there, if there are any scheduling issues that folks do want to.
Let me know.
Yeah, let us know before then because we can always, we can always have folks, you know, roll off of certain ones and roll on to other ones, so.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
So no items for future agenda, then we can adjourn if I have a motion.
So moved.
All's in favor? I, I didn't even wait for the second. Who was seconding?
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Good night.